Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call the White Marsh Board of Supervisors meeting for February 9th to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Father, and to the Son, and to the Holy Spirit. And to a country that is united, free, and fair, and just as it is now.
All right, we're gonna start tonight with our police accommodations, so we'll turn it over to Chief Ward. I'm sorry, Lieutenant Mack. The much better-looking Lieutenant Mack.
There you go. Welcome, everybody. First, I'd like to thank the board, Township Manager, everyone up front here for the time to let us present some accommodations, or accommodations to our officers over the last few years for their efforts going above and beyond in their service to the community. So, a little background, the officer supervisors, their unit supervisors will submit when they feel they do a job above and beyond, that goes above the everyday call of duty, for accommodation, and we give them out to a accommodation committee, which consisted of four sergeants this year, that review each one and the definitions of our accommodations and see, you know, what they need and what we can give out here today. So also, thanks to everybody in the audience, family, friends, all the members of the department for the time here to let us go over these. The first one we have tonight is a life-saving commendation, and the life-saving commendation is given to a member who acted in a manner that saved the life of another human being, whether by oral communication or physical action. So Officer Steve Dunning, can you come up here, please? So Officer Steve Dunning, on April 13th, 2022, officers were dispatched to the Orange Theory Fitness Center in the Concha Hockin section of White Marsh Township for the report of an unresponsive subject. Officer Dunning was the first to arrive and began assessing the 32-year-old patient. He quickly determined that she was in cardiac arrest and started CPR. He continued these efforts until paramedics arrived, and together with the paramedics, they were able to apply an automatic external defibrillator, commonly known as an AED. A shock was delivered through the AED, and the patient regained her pulse. She was transported to the hospital and was stabilized. She spent a week in the hospital's ICU, and after that time was able to walk out of the hospital on her own. Thanks to Officer Dunning's life-saving efforts, this patient is alive today. For his quick and decisive actions that resulted in saving the life of another, Officer Stephen Dunning is awarded his third life-saving commendation. The next round of commendations this evening will be for merit. The commendation for merit is given to an officer who provides an act of intelligent and valuable police service, demonstrating faithfulness and perseverance, including an especially important arrest accomplished through highly intelligent police performance. Our first officer for this award tonight is Officer Kevin Gally, who unfortunately cannot be here this evening due to a sports competition with his daughter down in Florida, a competition. But we're still gonna go through this here so he can be recognized. This commendation for Officer Gally is long overdue. On September 18th of 2017, Officer Gally was on patrol when he received a report of two subjects possibly breaking into cars in the Mayflower Road development off Germantown Pike. Upon his arrival in the neighborhood, Officer Gally had the wherewithal to park his police car well away from the scene of the reported crime and approached the area on foot in order to avoid detection. This tactic proved effective as Officer Gally surprised the two suspects, who immediately began to flee the scene. Officer Gally engaged them in a prolonged flip pursuit through the backyards of the neighborhood while providing information to other responding officers. Officer Gally was able to apprehend one of these suspects. Officer Gally's subsequent investigation revealed that the suspect had arrived in our township in a stolen vehicle, which was bearing a stolen license plate. Officer Gally was able to obtain a confession from this suspect to crimes in our township and to crimes in several other neighboring jurisdictions. Several other suspects were identified, arrested, and confessed to, in total, 25 instances of thefts from vehicles and 10 motor vehicle thefts. For his perseverance and his intelligent and valuable police service, Officer Gally is being awarded this commendation for merit tonight.
Continuing with our merit commendations, we have awards going to three of our detectives from our investigative division. The first recipient, Detective Fred Latanzi, also couldn't be with us tonight due to other pressing family engagements. However, tonight, he's being awarded two merit commendations, his third and fourth commendation for merit. The first instance occurred on June of 2018, when White Marsh officers responded to a man with a gun in the Cedar Heights section of White Marsh Township. The arriving officers found a male lying on the front lawn with the gun pressed firmly against his head. While the officer secured the area and removed, cleared the area of other residents, Detective Latanzi responded to the scene. Now, some background, Detective Latanzi is a trained crisis negotiator, and at the time of this incident was also serving with the Montgomery County SWAT team as a negotiator. Once on scene and over the course of the next 45 minutes, he used his skills and training as a negotiator to de-escalate the situation, calm the suspect, and convince him to abandon the gun, thereby ending the situation peacefully without any injury or death to anyone. For his professionalism, perseverance, and determination resulting in the peaceful resolution of a potentially deadly situation, Detective Latanzi is being awarded a commendation for merit. He's also being recognized for his actions commencing on November 4th of 2020. He responded to the scene of an armed robbery at the ATM machine in Lafayette Hill section of White Marsh Township. On scene, he did what most investigators do, he interviewed the victim and processed the scene, but this was only the initial investigation and the beginning of a long, arduous task. From there, he was able to determine that the victim's stolen ATM card was used a short time later in the city of Philadelphia. He worked with investigators from Philadelphia and discovered that the same suspects had committed a similar armed robbery in the Chestnut Hill section of Philadelphia merely 20 minutes before the robbery in our township. Throughout his ongoing investigation and surveillance, Detective Latanzi was able to identify two suspects who were arrested and charged for the robbery in our township, as well as multiple other crimes, including robbery in the city of Philadelphia. His diligence resulted in the arrest and subsequent confessions of these two suspects for multiple crimes committed with firearms, and for his extraordinary efforts, Detective Latanzi is being a fourth commendation for merit. Our next commendation is for Detective Richard Hooks-Zodroga. Rich, you want to come on up? Yes, please. Calixt's down, so he's having a good day. Detective Zodroga is being recognized tonight for his investigation, arrest, and eventual conviction of a suspect for criminal attempt to commit homicide. This investigation began in June of 2019, as Detective Zodroga was handling multiple incidents of harassment, threats, and domestic disputes involving one of our residents and her estranged husband. As he was delving deeper into these complaints and a new complaint of possible custodial interference, he discovered that our resident's estranged husband had traveled to Colorado with the couple's two children on one-way tickets. Detective Zodroga was instrumental in ensuring that the children were returned to Pennsylvania and returned to their mother. During the investigation that followed, Detective Zodroga learned that while in Colorado, the suspect had actually attempted to kill the children by poisoning them with sedatives in the slushies that he had made for them. This was all in an attempt to punish his ex-wife. He worked tirelessly with the investigators in Colorado Springs and as the investigation unfolded. Here in Pennsylvania, he took multiple witness and victim statements, secured evidence, and continued to coordinate with these authorities in Colorado Springs, who would ultimately have jurisdiction for this offense. In May of 2020, an arrest warrant was issued by the El Paso County, Colorado District Attorney. Detective Zodroga located and arrested the suspect here in Pennsylvania. He was subsequently extradited to Colorado, and in May of 2021, Detective Zodroga traveled to Colorado to offer testimony in the trial, thereby assisting in the securing of a conviction for the criminal attempt to commit homicide of these two children. The suspect will be spending at least the next 20 years of his life at the Colorado Sterling Correctional Facility. For all of these efforts and for his dedication and perseverance to seeing that justice be served in this case, Detective Zodroga is being awarded a commendation for merit. This is Detective Zodroga's fourth recognition for meritorious service. Our final commendation for merit tonight goes to Detective Stephen Kearns. Also known as our best-dressed detective. Steve Kearns is a detective with the White Marsh Township Police Department, and he's being recognized tonight for his efforts as the lead investigator in a string of five armed robbery hijackings of courier vehicles that were transporting narcotics and other medical supplies. All of these events occurred in our township. Beginning in December of 2018 and through September of 2019, a courier company, which is located in the Plymouth Meeting section of our township, fell victim to five armed hijackings or attempted armed robberies of their vehicles. A six robbery with the same motor shop rendezvous, same MO, occurred in Blair County, Pennsylvania. In total, tens of thousands of dollars in narcotics were stolen, and six victims were terrorized by these events. The robberies were committed by multiple actors who brandished firearms, and on several instances, bound, beat, and pistol-whipped their victims. Adding to the boldness of these crimes, on two of the occasions, the actors disguised themselves as police officers. As the lead investigator, Detective Kearns spent countless hours of investigation, including using state-of-the-art investigative techniques in the forensic examination of cell phone records. Through the course of 46 search warrants and months of surveillance and coordination with multiple agencies and jurisdictions, Detective Kearns was able to identify seven separate suspects in this string of robberies. His body of work led to the apprehension, prosecution, and conviction of all seven suspects. To date, all told, they will be serving between 43 and 86 years in prison, with two of the suspects still awaiting sentencing. While this commendation seems to be late in its awarding, should be noted that the investigation spanned nearly a full six years, during which time Detective Kearns never let up and left no stone unturned. For this dedication and perseverance, and for his intelligence and professionalism throughout the course of this investigation, Detective Kearns is being awarded a commendation for
And we've reached the final award. This will be a commendation of valor. Commendation for valor is the highest commendation awarded by the White Marsh Township Police Department. It is given for an extraordinary act of outstanding courage without regard for personal safety while in actual combat with an armed and dangerous adversary. The recipient of the commendation of valor this night is Corporal Matthew Sedulus. On March 10th, 2021, White Marsh officers were dispatched to the Mulberry Lane Residential Neighborhood for a report of a male suspect attempting to gain entry into parked vehicles. Corporal Sedulus and his K-9 partner, Nika, promptly responded to the area to investigate. As Corporal Sedulus was arriving to Mulberry Lane area, he observed a male matching the suspect's description on Mulberry Lane near Ridge Pike. This suspect, upon seeing Corporal Sedulus, began walking away from the officer along Ridge Pike. This suspect refused Corporal Sedulus's orders to stop, prompting Corporal Sedulus to attempt to physically restrain him. As Corporal Sedulus grasped the suspect's arm, the suspect spun around towards Corporal Sedulus and drew a handgun. He pointed the gun at Corporal Sedulus's head and pulled the trigger multiple times. Miraculously, the weapon did not fire. Corporal Sedulus immediately grabbed the suspect and the gun and wrestled him to the ground in a fight for his life. Corporal Sedulus was able to disarm the subject and hold him to the ground until responding officers arrived and took the suspect into custody. It was later discovered that the weapon brandished by the suspect had been stolen from a vehicle the night before. The gun was fully loaded, but the suspect had failed to chamber a round. The suspect was brought to trial and convicted of attempted homicide of a police officer. He was sentenced to a minimum of 27 years in a state correctional facility before he would be eligible for parole. For his outstanding courage, while in actual combat with an armed and dangerous adversary, Corporal Matthew Sedulus is awarded the commendation of Valor. Thank you, guys. I have one more proclamation I'd like to read for Lieutenant Jeff Nowak, and it is my honor to be able to do this for Jeff. Kind of worked out that way. So Jeff is retiring from the White Marsh Police Department after many years of service, and I've known him for many years. Hopefully, this gives him time to work on your jump shot.
Nothing wrong with my jump shot.
Lieutenant, they said, "Don't ad lib" to me, so I'll read. "A proclamation for retirement for Lieutenant Jeffrey J. Nowak. Whereas Lieutenant Nowak joined the White Marsh Police Department in 1993, and whereas Lieutenant Nowak has been assigned to the Bike Unit, Motorcycle Unit, the Attorney Generals, and the District Attorneys Drug Task Forces, and has been the lead instructor for both the Cop Camp Program and the Citizens Police Academy. And whereas Lieutenant Nowak has been the lead firearms instructor for White Marsh Police and firearms instructor for the Montgomery County Community College Police Academy, and his longest-held assignment has been as a SWAT Strategic Weapons and Tactics Team Member for 28 years. And whereas Lieutenant Nowak served with the White Marsh Township Police SWAT Team before helping to create the Colonial Area Tactical Team, which includes Concha Hockin, Plymouth, and White Marsh, and finally transitioning to the Montgomery County SWAT Central Region Team where he finished his career as a team commander. And whereas Lieutenant Nowak earned his bachelor's degree from Penn State University, his master's degree from Westchester University, attended the FBI National Academy Session Number 272, and completed the Northwestern University School of Police Staff and Command Session Number 326. And whereas Lieutenant Nowak has held the ranks of Patrolman, Patrol Sergeant, Community Relations Sergeant, and spent the last seven years as lieutenant and second-in-command of the department. Now therefore be it resolved that we, the members of the White Marsh Township Board of Supervisors, hereby congratulate Lieutenant Jeffrey J. Nowak on his retirement and thank him for his years of dedicated service to White Marsh Township and the entire White Marsh community. Jeff, you want your...
Sure.
Suitable for framing.
Thank you to everybody in the White Marsh Police Department. You know, hearing those stories and watching Chief get choked up at the end really is a testament to what you guys do and women do every day, and we thank you on behalf of all the residents and their families for keeping us safe on a daily basis. No words can truly express the gratitude that we have as a township. Thank you very much. You guys are now dismissed. All right, we'll move on to approval of minutes. Do I have a motion to adopt the meeting minutes from January 3rd, 2023?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, we'll move on to board public discussion items. So we'll review open space acquisition commitment, conservation easement at 7111 Sheaf Lane. Mr. Miller.
Thank you, Chair McCusker. What we have before you, we're gonna have a couple folks speak about a request that has been made to the Board of Supervisors with regards to the property, commonly known as 7111 Sheaf Lane Alter Property, and a conservation easement request to preserve 29 of the total 51 acres that would be preserved at this location. We have some representatives here. I believe Ed Shin would like to come up. Matt Shiron would like to come up here and make a few comments with regards to their requests, so I would ask them to please come up and introduce yourself, and you can speak.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair McCusker and Board of Supervisors.
Good evening.
My name is Edmund Shin, and I live at 7032 Lafayette Avenue. I am acting president of the Highlands Historical Society, and I am joined tonight by Matt Shiron, who is chair of the Highlands Land Preservation Committee. We are here to introduce the resolution to fund open space preservation in the township. I would like to begin by thanking Township Manager Rick Mellor, Planning and Zoning Officer Charlie Guttenplan, and Solicitor Dave Sander for their time and assistance with this effort. We are here tonight seeking to preserve the 51-acre property situated between the Highlands and Willow Lake Preserve, which bears the address of 7111 Sheaf Lane in Fort Washington. As you may know, the owners of the land submitted a development plan to subdivide the property and build 46 houses. However, recognizing the importance of this land as an open space resource, the developers graciously interrupted development planning to engage with neighbors in an effort to preserve the property. Preservation of this land is not only consistent with, but in fact achieves one of the goals of the Township's Open Space Plan and 2020 Selective Comprehensive Plan Update. Therein, it is stated that this land is referred to as a priority open space opportunity that is encouraged to be preserved due to important view sheds, natural features, and environmental The Highlands Historical Society is an adjoining landowner and a 501(c)(3) nonprofit corporation that is a steward for permanently protected public land and historic buildings. Inspired by the neighbors' initial preservation efforts, the Highlands formed the Land Preservation Committee, which ultimately devised a plan to protect the entire 51 acres through a public-private partnership, utilizing a combination of fee, simple purchases, and conservation easements, permitting the existing dwelling to remain but limiting the property's future development. Last month, the Highlands Historical Society and more than 20 residents supporting this effort appeared via Zoom at the Township's Open Space Committee meeting, where the Highlands' plan and request for $6 million in open space funding received unanimous support from the Open Space Committee. Thereafter, a formal request was submitted that the Board of Supervisors consider the proposed resolution to allocate $6 million in open space tax revenue for a permanent open space conservation easement on 29 acres of land, which is known as Lot 4.
Recording in progress.
Thereafter, the 46-acre Highlands with trailhead parking, street signage, and ample lighting will connect to the 109-acre Willow Lake Preserve, creating a public open space preserve that will one day rival Morris Arboretum and be available to White Marsh Township residents free of charge. The Township's open space funds will be used to fund the Highlands' fee simple acquisition of Lot 4. All 29 acres of Lot 4 will be protected in its current state in perpetuity through conservation easements granted in favor of White Marsh Township. 19 acres of Lot 4 will be curated for public trails that connect the Highlands to Willow Lake Preserve. Trails that already exist at the Highlands for public use will be extended up through Lot 4 to make this connection. To create a loop from the Highlands to Willow Lake and back to the Highlands, there will be one trail that goes up through Lot 4 on the Morris roadside, and another trail running up Skipback Pike, utilizing an existing 35-foot-wide equestrian easement along Skipback Pike. Once completed, trailhead parking at the Highlands will give way to a network of trails that will meander through a diverse biome of woods, meadows, pastures, formal gardens, historic mansions, and wetlands. All of this will be available to White Marsh Township residents for passive recreation and enjoyment free of charge. To fund the preservation of this project, money needs to be raised from public and private sources. Funding is being sought from White Marsh Township, Montgomery County, and the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. The neighbors have pledged $6 million, which will be contributed through conservation sales and donations. I'm gonna turn the mic over to Matt Shiron, who's gonna describe a little bit about how we will curate the land.
Don't usually have to put the mic down. Hello, Board of Supervisors and guests. Thank you for your time. My name is Matt Shiron. I am a board member at the Highlands and the Highlands Land Preservation Committee Chair. I want to make a public statement on behalf of the Highlands Historical Society. The Highlands is thoroughly invested in protecting this open space and ensuring the community has access. Our goal is to conserve the site's ecological assets and eliminate the liability development poses to the site's view sheds and surrounding sense of place. I have been a community member for my whole life and would like to have my two children appreciate the attractive characteristics that the Sheaf Lane corridor provides. The Highlands' master plan for this open space will implement best management practices to ensure the land's ecological, educational, and historical potential is reached. That includes the site's diverse environmental resources of forest, historic agriculture, meadow... meadows, and waterways. We hope this transaction and subsequent management will set an example and inspire others to appreciate and protect our open spaces. Thank you for your time.
Chair McCusker, if there's no questions for Matt and I, we would turn this over to the board.
Is there any board questions?
I just have a question.
Hi.
Hi, Ed. Thank you both for your presentation. I mean, this is exciting. I've heard about the trails and, you know, the preservation, the access. Can you speak a little bit to parking?
Do you want to speak to that?
I know this is down the road and that's not exactly before us, but I want to make sure that people throughout the township and beyond would really have true accessibility, not just people that are able to walk there.
Yeah, so that's where the Highlands gives us a unique capability. We already have existing parking lot that's utilized by the Highlands for events there, and the plan would be to extend that parking. We have to extend the dimensions for horse trailer parking for possible equestrian use. And if, if, our hope is that we have to expand the parking lot for the amount of people that are going to be enjoying the space, so we would consider that a great thing. So, so we have the parking lot and we can expand that as needed.
And would Willow Lake also have, is there parking associated with Willow Lake in any way?
Yeah, so Willow Lake currently has parking behind the CVS, which is one of the issues, I think, with the, um, the, the use of it is that it's sometimes tough to find where to park. The Highlands is going to provide a very welcoming presence. Right now, we have great engagement. Um, you know, we've learned from some of the issues with other open space parcels that are managed by nonprofits where there's not enough parking, and that's a big complaint. And I think it's a situation we won't have because we have so much parking already and there's plenty of room to expand the parking, which we intend to do.
Okay, so even if there is an event at the Highlands, people would still be able to access the other aspects?
Correct. And it's important to note that when we have a private event, we close the formal gardens and the mansion. We don't close the, the meadows and the fields and the public areas.
Thank you.
And there's a conservation easement currently in place over the parking that the township has control over as well as the board seat on, on the Highlands Board.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other board comment? Any public questions? Okay.
Yeah, I'm Steve Kaufman, 644 Harts Ridge Road. I'm going to speak briefly. The Open Space Committee certainly has endorsed this after considerable conversation. And one thing that was very encouraging to us is that in our public session, people did ask specific questions about, you know, how the building envelopes would be arranged and trail access and that sort of thing. And Ed was very responsive and I think has already adopted one or two suggestions from Bevros. So I hope that spirit of cooperation on both sides continues. And it's a complicated deal. There's going to be many of, what's the cliche, a split between the cup and the lip because there's so many funding sources. So I would just, having been involved in these things in other contexts, developing affordable housing with investors and stuff, there can be a lot of screw-ups as we get to the final end of the road here. So I would just say to the township, be patient. And it's really impressive, if you adopt this thing tonight, that you found a very artful way, in a sense, to be the first in funder without getting in over your skis and actually making a legal commitment. But the resolutions proposed tonight will really help the, uh, the group here to Highlands to go out and raise other funding. So that was artfully done, Mr. Kilkeny and Supervisors.
Good luck. Thank you. Anything else from the public? All right, I'm going to jump down to resolution. Do I have a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2023-06 authorizing White Marsh Township to commit $6 million from its open space fund to purchase a conservation easement over 29 acres of land located at 7111 Sheaf Lane with the Highlands Historical Society as buyer of the land pursuant to appraisal of Michael J. Barth Company dated December 30th, 2022, and various other conditions stated in the proposed resolution?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Miller.
Just one more time if there's any.
Any more public comment? Oh, on Zoom.
That's, that's just, we're second trails mentioning that there is parking, talking about the parking issue.
Uh, and I just wanted to say we are very much in support of this preservation effort.
Okay. Thank you. And I know there's a lot of people here in support of it and that's duly noted. So anybody else want to speak? Okay. Any board comment? Mr. Miller.
Ms. Nester?
Yes.
Ms. Tureen?
Yes.
Mr. Manuel?
Yes.
Chair McCusker?
Yes. Resolution carries.
Thank you.
All right. We'll move on to ordinances. Do I have a motion to adopt ordinance number 1021, amending Chapter 10 Historic District to revise the definition of alteration and to revise the provisions governing the issuance of a building permit in the Historic District?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Miller.
I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Guttenplan to explain the ordinance.
Thank you. This is an ordinance that you authorized at your reorganization meeting on January 3rd. It's a simple amendment of two sections of Chapter 10, which is the Historic District, to clarify what the jurisdiction of Harb. is and what the jurisdiction of the board's certificates of appropriateness are. And the intent of the simple amendments are to clarify that Harb.'s jurisdiction and the certificates of appropriateness are required when there's a project within the White Marsh Township portion of the Historic District which is visible from a public right-of-way, generally from a public road. And this has always been the intent, it's always been in the ordinance, but there's been some ambiguity, and I worked with the Solicitor's Office to develop this amendment, and it amends Section 10-3, which is the definition section. It redefines very slightly the definition of alteration. It adds the term "original construction" as one of the types of improvements that would be covered by Harb. and by certificates of appropriateness. And then the second amendment is to Section 10-9A Subsection 2, which is the section that indicates what permits come under the jurisdiction of Harb. and certificates of appropriateness. And it simplifies that particular section by adding a couple of words talking about alterations as it's been redefined to be broadened and/or any and all part of any building or structure in the district. Reason for that is we're not always looking at buildings, we're sometimes looking at retaining walls, fences, signs, other things than just buildings. And with "original construction" in the revised definition of alteration, that term is also used in the section I just, I just mentioned, and this clarifies what Harb.'s jurisdiction is and what is required for certificates of appropriateness. And the result or effect of these simple changes is that Harb. will no longer be looking at improvements that are occurring to the rear of properties that are not visible or to a property on a private street. You've seen many decks behind buildings here that Harb. has had to review and you have had to issue certificates for. Those have really never been the intent of the district, they're not the intent of the legislation upon which the district is based, and we just wanted to clarify that once and for all so that Harb. is really looking at what they're really entitled and justified to look at. So that would be the two simple amendments to Chapter 10. We have made Plymouth Township aware of this since Plymouth has a companion ordinance for their portion of Plymouth, the Plymouth Meeting Historic District as well.
Thank you, Charlie. Do you have any board comment?
And did Plymouth have any, Plymouth was okay, Charlie, with this?
I have not heard any comments from Plymouth. We've sent the ordinance to them and told them this was being considered by the board. And this was also discussed briefly at a Harb. meeting in December, and Plymouth's representatives were present at that meeting.
Anything else?
Good evening. Sedel Zo of Harts Ridge Road. I have three comments. One is a question, and I'll start with that. It's a simple one. Does Plymouth, um, do the Plymouth Commissioners have to approve this change as well? Do they have to take action, given that Harb. and the Historic District are governed by a joint committee made up of Plymouth and, and White Marsh residents, appointees?
I don't know the answer to that, but I think it will be up to Plymouth how they want to interpret their side of the ordinance. I don't think we can require that unless the Solicitor feels otherwise.
I, I agree with your interpretation. Mr. Guttenplan.
Thank you.
That they could choose to, to interpret the ordinance how they want? I mean, I.
Each township brings to Harb. the application they feel appropriate. This is going to guide what we bring to Harb. Their ordinance will have to guide what they bring to Harb. and how they interpret it. They're aware of how we are interpreting it. To my knowledge, they have not yet initiated a similar amendment.
I mean, won't that create confusion on Harb.? Because Harb. members don't vote based on their, which township they represent, they vote as a joint body. I'm just a little concerned about it potentially creating confusion, and I'll leave it at that.
We'll bring this matter to Plymouth Township's attention.
Thank you. And my two comments are, first, I, I spoke at the last meeting when you authorized the public discussion on this matter, and I spoke at length about the new, the new terms that were introduced and the ones that were stricken. And there have been no changes since then. But I did look up the phrase "original construction," and in a, some sort of lawyer's dictionary, it does indicate that it refers to new construction. But I don't know that the general public would necessarily interpret that way, and so I would suggest that in addition to the term "original construction," you add "original" or "new," just add the words "or new" for clarification for the layperson, because I don't know that, that people would generally understand what "original construction" means. So that's one comment. And the other has to do with what is visible and what is being reviewed based on its location, public or private way. And Charlie, you just said, if I heard you correctly tonight, that the ordinance would only apply to alterations or new construction visible from the public way, not private streets. And that is another source of confusion because, and I'll give you a perfect example. Had K. Hovnanian proceeded with the 67-unit townhouse development behind Abolition Hall, some of those streets, all of the interior streets would have been private streets. Would they not have been subject, would this construction not have been subject to review by Harb. and held to this ordinance?
I believe that Harb. is going to have to review and interpret each application on its own merits, but if you see buildings from a public road, even though they may front on a private road intervening, my understanding and the way I've seen it done in other municipalities is that those would still come under the jurisdiction of Harb. They are visible from a public right-of-way. They may not front on a public right-of-way, but they're visible.
I, I, I would hope that this board, as well as Harb., will uphold your interpretation and ensure that any development with interior private streets where the development is visible from the public way, such as Germantown Pike or Butler Pike, primary roads, would be held to this standard, to, held to the ordinance. So that's my, my request, that, that this board and Harb. uphold Charlie's interpretation. Thank you very much.
Any other public comment? Mr. Miller.
Ms. Nester?
Yes.
Ms. Tureen?
Yes.
Mr. Manuel?
Yes.
Chair McCusker?
Yes. Carries, okay. Do I have a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2023-07 authorizing the submission of a Department of Conservation and Natural Resources, DCNR, Miles Park Phase III Grant Application for the Magical Miles Park Playground in the amount of $500,000, which requires a 50% match from the township?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Miller.
Thank you, Chair McCusker. This is another exciting project where we're able to really conclude the improvements at Miles Park, and what this has to do with is the widely popular playground area up at Miles Park. There has been, over the course of the last few years, there's been some defects and other things with that, the playground equipment. It's just older, and as things get older, they age a little bit. And we've looked at it and feel that this is a very good grant application that is being worked on by the Parks and Recreation Department as well as Krista and her team at Gilmore. This plan will provide inclusive and accessible new playground area. It'll replace some outdated, unsafe, and obsolete structures. We believe that it'll also provide some native tree planting along there, benches, and keeping up with the times, a solar cell charging station. That's what kind of people want nowadays, and solar is a good way to go to do and accomplish that. So as, as you mentioned, the grant is for half a million dollars. The township would contribute a match of 250, and this is a component of the grant application that we must complete, which is the resolution before you this evening.
This will be a great addition to Miles Park. Any other board comment? Public comment? Mr. Miller.
Ms. Nester?
Yes.
Ms. Tureen?
Yes.
Mr. Manuel?
Yes.
Chair McCusker?
Yes. Do I have a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2023-08 authorizing the submission of a Monco, Montgomery County, 2040 Implementation Grant for the Well Street Parking Lot and Pedestrian Bridge in the amount of $190,887.40, which require a 20% match from the township?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Miller.
Thank you, Chair McCusker. In keeping with grants and improvements, this is another grant that is being worked on by our Parks and Recreation Department with the help of Krista and Gilmore. And that is something that we've been talking about, it's been in the budget for, in the capital budget for several years, and it is making an improvement for the Well Street open space, for Cedar Grove Park, for the Miracle, the Future Miracle Nature Trail, as well as additional open spaces to have a parking area that would be a sustainable trailhead at Well Street. It'd also be used for the. It'd also be used for the users along Cedar Grove Park. In addition, in the Well Street open space area, there is an area that kind of dips down and is a little bit unsafe, and we've been talking about including some kind of pedestrian bridge. That area there, there is always one in the fall, one in the spring, where we have cleanups and we have education about native trees, invasive, so on, and it gets, does get quite a bit of foot traffic and use, and this would just be another safe feature for that trail. Again, we've, I believe today, we had Montgomery County Representatives out there with our staff, looking at the proposed project and providing some background on the project, but one of the things that we need to do in order to apply for this grant is this resolution for your consideration this evening.
Thank you. Thanks, Krista, for working on these and Park and Rec. Great work. Any board comment?
It's exciting.
Any public comment? Mr. Miller.
Ms. Nester?
Yes.
Ms. Tureen?
Yes.
Mr. Manuel?
Yes.
Chair McCusker?
Do I have a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2023-09, authorizing the update to the 2023 fee schedule for various zoning and fire marshal fees?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Miller.
Thank you, Chair McCusker. When we adopted our fee schedule at the end of 2022, we realized that there was a couple items that did not, were not included. We're able to adopt changes to our fee schedule by resolution, and here it has to do with zoning hearing board, the application for a variant special exception, which was an increase of $50, as well as moving the, removing the square footage up to 200 square feet. Also, our fire marshal noticed that we missed a section of the use and occupancy permits that are needed, that he would inspect, so we want to make sure that they're in there so that we can apply them when folks would come in and seek those either zoning hearing board application or use and occupancy permits.
Thank you. Do we have any board comment? Any public comment? Mr. Miller.
Ms. Nester?
Yes.
Ms. Tureen?
Yes.
Mr. Manuel?
Yes.
Chair McCusker?
Yes. All right, moving on to motions. Do I have a motion to table the approval for the vacancy board member for Vice Chair, J.C. Toll, for 2023?
So moved.
Second.
J.C.'s not here tonight, so we're going to table her, appointment of her vacancy member. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Do I have a motion to appoint Chief of Police Christopher P. Ward as the Emergency Management Coordinator due to the resignation of the current Emergency Management Coordinator?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Miller.
Thank you, Chair McCusker. As you stated, our current Fire Marshal Emergency Management Coordinator has resigned. He's moving on his career elsewhere in municipal government, just not unfortunately here in White Marsh. As a result, and in accordance with the Pennsylvania Emergency Management Services Code, we need to have a designated Emergency Management Coordinator, so in the interim and transition time, we are recommending that Chief Ward be bestowed that responsibility.
Any board comment? Public comment? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Do I have a motion to authorize the public bid for the 2023 road paving program?
So moved.
Second.
I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Heinrich.
All right, that's what I thought. Go ahead, Krista.
Thank you, Chair McCusker. As you know, we're nearing completion of the contract documents for the 2023 road program, and we're asking for your authorization to bid those plans. I can list the roads that we've identified. It's a small portion of Emerson Drive, 12th Avenue, Whitefield Drive, Robin Lane, 3rd Street, 1st Avenue, Arlingham Road, Crescent Avenue, Thornhill Drive, Eam Drive, Cottler Drive, Churchard, and Park Avenue. And many of these roads were selected because there was recent Pico or Aqua trench work, and they have provided a contribution towards paving what they had disturbed.
Makes sense.
Yeah.
Any board comment? Any public comment? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Do I have a motion to table the approval for the appointment of Greg Nester to alternate on the zoning hearing board?
So moved.
Second.
I will be recusing myself from this vote.
All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve the appointment of the following individuals to boards and commissions? Tamika Walton to the Library Board, term ending December 31, 2025. Vera Kozabutsky, Shade Tree Commission, term ending December 31, 2025. Fran Kelly, Shade Tree Commission, term ending December 31, 2026.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any board comment? I think Tamika's here. Tamika, if you want, you can say a few words.
No problem.
Yeah, thank you for coming. It looks like your daughter is very enthusiastic.
Yes.
I'd like to hear what she has to say after you're done.
Tamika Walton, 2nd Street, very much looking forward to working with everyone in the township. I've been a resident here for a few years now, and just, again, just looking forward to contribute to the library and, you know, bringing light to everything that they have off, have to offer, and also some of my skill sets and interest and engagement as well.
Awesome. Thanks, Tamika. Appreciate your volunteerism. Thanks for hanging out for the exciting parts of the meeting, anyway. You can leave if you want now.
Let us vote.
Right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Congratulations and thank you.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion to authorize the advertisement of an ordinance amendment for Chapter 111 vehicles and traffic, removing several handicap parking locations that are no longer in use?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Miller.
Thank you, Chair McCusker. I realized when I put this out there, it looks like I'm taking something away from handicapped folks, but that is the farthest thing from the truth here. In our code, when we receive requests from residents, folks that might have a handicap and they want parking in front of their house to make it more convenient for them, it's reviewed by our police department. After a recommendation from the police department, in order to have it enforced, it has to be enacted by ordinance. So similarly, when they're no longer needed, somebody moves away or, you know, doesn't have the handicap anymore, in order for them to be removed from use and not enforced, they have to be removed from the code. So we had the police department, Traffic Safety Unit, go out and review those that are in our code to see which ones are still being used and which ones are no longer required to be in use. And again, these are single parking spaces that are, would be in front of a resident's property. So we have several that are requested to be removed, and it's really a maintenance of the code issue than we are trying to remove handicap parking in the township, so just to clarify.
All right, understood. Any board comment? Any public comment? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Do I have a motion to authorize the advertisement of an ordinance amendment of Chapter 3, Administration of Government, Article, oh my God, 16, Boards and Commissions, by adding the Director of Public Works and a civilian alternate as voting members of the Emergency Services Board?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Miller.
Thank you, Chair McCusker. Currently in our Emergency Services Board ordinance, we have 13 voting members. We have one that is an alternate who would then step in if one of the civilian members was unable to attend the meeting. The board has requested that the Director of Public Works attend those meetings, which he has, since he, when there is generally some kind of emergency, Public Works plays a vital role in that emergency, and having him at the meeting has been a benefit engaging in those conversations that we have regarding emergency services. He's been attending for probably about the better part of a year, and at a recent, some of the recent meetings, the Emergency Services Board asked if he could or how he could become a voting member. That's very simple. You have to amend the ordinance. So they made a recommendation that the ordinance be amended to add him as a voting member. In an effort, in an effort to keep it an odd number, they also requested that the civilian member, who was an alternate, become a voting member. Therefore, we have an odd number with this recommendation of 15 voting members, which would include then the Director of Public Works, as well as another civilian that would no longer be an alternate, they would be a voting member. So it would be four civilians.
Thank you. Thanks for the explanation.
As recommended by the Emergency Services Board.
Lot of voting. Any other board comment? Any public comment? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Do I have a motion to authorize the advertisement of an ordinance amendment for Chapter 105, Subdivision and Land Development, by updating certain definitions to provide consistency with the recent Chapter 55 Tree Protection Amendments?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Miller.
I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Guttenplan for a brief explanation.
Thank you. This is kind of a housekeeping amendment. We did this in 2014 when Chapter 55 was last substantially updated. We also updated the SALDO, Subdivision Land Development Ordinance, so that there's consistency and not a conflict between ordinances. So this is merely amending seven definitions in the Subdivision Land Development Ordinance that are also used in Chapter 55 to match what's in Chapter 55, so that if somebody has a subdivision or a land development, there isn't a conflict and ambiguity between the two ordinances. Several of them are extremely editorial in nature, a word or two, a couple of others a little bit more substantive. The one main example I will point out is Heritage Tree, which has a different measurement now in both ordinances, and we want to get that consistent, and therefore, these seven definitions are being proposed for amendment. And this is actually on the Planning Commission's agenda for next Tuesday to be reviewed by them.
Okay, thanks, Charlie. Any board comment? Any public comment? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Do I have a motion to authorize the donation of a K-9 police vehicle to another law enforcement agency, North Hampton Township Bucks County Police Department?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Miller.
Thank you, Chair McCusker. This was brought to us by the police department. As we go through our inventory of fleet and recycle cars and cycle cars out, one that was due to be cycled out was a K-9 unit, because we had a new one coming in. As we have done in the past, when there are other law enforcement agencies in need, we have considered making a donation of a vehicle for that law enforcement for one of our older vehicles. We've actually done this once or twice with K-9 vehicles before. K-9 vehicles have specialized equipment in them. It's not just your normal car with, you know, just a normal separator in it. There's a hot and pop to keep the animal, the dog cool, so it's a very specialized type of K-9 vehicle. The North Hampton Police Department reached out, and in order for us to make that donation, it has to be authorized by the Board of Supervisors. So we're recommending that that happens for this vehicle that is being cycled out of our use.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. It's very nice of us to make a donation to another police department. Any board comment? Public comment? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve an Act 153 Open Space Grant to the White Marsh Foundation in the amount of $20,841.50 for the maintenance of the Dixon Meadow Preserve at Erdene Hymn Farm?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Miller.
Thank you, Chair McCusker. This was a request that actually happened two years ago when they initially presented the White Marsh Foundation to us, a five-year plan of how they are maintaining the Dixon Meadow Preserve. At that time, and again this time, we had the plan go to our Environmental Advisory Board, because a lot of it deals with plannings and how they care for that meadow. The EAB, at their January meeting, reviewed this request, reviewed the work that is being done, and recommended that the work was in line with what they are promoting. Therefore, we are recommending that the grant, which is a little bit lower than what they normally asked for and they asked for last time, be considered by the board this evening, and that would come from our Open Space Maintenance Fund.
Thank you. Any board comment? Any public comment? All right.
Steve Kaufman, I'm speaking more as an individual rather than chair of Open Space. Certainly, Open Space, if it's been sent to Open Space, as it was the first time around, would have approved of this. There's no doubt about that. But I do want to speak a little bit to the process. Apart from EAB review, I think there is a need for all these requests from third parties that are going to tap into the Open Space Fund, for there to be a review at some level, either by REC or Open Space, just to weigh the request against other needs that might be, other demands that might be made on Open Space funding. At this point, we are rather flush. Probably if you racked up everything that's likely to eat up Open Space funding of this nature, for example, the maintenance of Coons Park, you would still have more than $2 million net available for land purchases and whatnot. So there's plenty of money around right now, but there's not going to be as much, and there really should be an annual look at what the draws are going to be. And just as an example, it's totally appropriate, but with Coons Park, which was purchased with Act 153 money, the township is now using that to, I think, restore things and fix up the landscaping. Totally appropriate, but it's a new cost. So I just think that the township should consider, as these requests come in, the idea of continually looking overall at Open Space needs. And obviously, we're about to be, hopefully be spending $6 million, but if another big deal comes along, we would have to go into the bond market, so we want to think about that, too, our ability to carry debt. Thanks, but-
Thank you.
-Open Space would be sympathetic.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other public comment?
Sedel Zove, Harts Ridge Road. This is a general comment about the Dixon Meadow Preserve. I deeply appreciate the landscape there, and I'm a regular walker and bird watcher at that location, regular enough to sometimes discover that there's nowhere to park. As I count the number of striped spaces, I believe there are eight. Yesterday, I stopped by in the hopes of walking, and the lot was filled beyond capacity. There's a sign that says, if the striped spots are filled, you have to leave, but in fact, there were three cars parked along the perimeter, such that if you wanted to back out of one of these striped parking spots, you had to do so very carefully in order not to bump into the cars parked along the perimeter. So I don't, I don't want to discourage visitors. It's a wonderful spot, particularly in the spring when the tadpoles are flitting about, floating about, and swimming all over the place. But what I do want to suggest is that perhaps the township can open a discussion with the White Marsh Foundation about the possibility of expanding parking in that lot. It's very small. It's a very popular spot. It's considered a hotspot in the birding community. When I was there not long ago, someone told me that there was news out on social media that a coyote had been spotted, and that that had drawn a lot of people. So it's a wonderful amenity for our residents, but it attracts people from a wider audience and really deserves a larger parking lot. And I, if that were to happen, I would hope that it could be some sort of permeable surface so that we're not creating more blacktop and additional runoff. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve the allocation of funds collected from the annual clothing drive to the Colonial Neighborhood Council? drive to the Colonial Neighborhood Council in the amount of $244.84?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Mallard.
Thank you Chair McCusker. Another successful clothing drive by the Parks and Recreation Department over Martin Luther King Jr. Weekend. A thank you to the community who comes out. I think it's now become so routine that they realize, okay, now's the time to clean out our closets, because we had well over 600 bags of clothes that were donated. As we have been doing in partnership with the Colonial Neighborhood Council in giving back to them, half of the donations that we receive from the clothing corporation are provided to them in a check, in this case this year, $244.84.
Sounds good. Any board comment? Any public comment? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Do I have a motion to authorize the order and settlement stipulation between 617 Creek Lane versus Monco Board of Assessment Appeals resulting in the decrease assessment for 2021 to 2022 requiring a repayment of $397.22 in township real estate taxes?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Mallard.
So this is a stipulation agreement that was agreed upon by the Board of Assessment and the Colonial School District. We are one of the, we are one of the taxing entities that also has to agree to it. We don't take the lead. It is the School District Board of Assessment that takes the lead in these assessment appeals. In this case, there is, the assessment is reduced in the year 2021 and 2022. As was mentioned, it'll be $397.22 in a tax, real estate tax refund to the property owner.
Thank you. Any board comment? Any public comment? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Do I have a motion to authorize the final escrow release number four for Laurel Holdings Group LLC, 633 Germantown Pike, in the amount of $18,183.32? Ms. Heinrich.
Chair McCusker.
Can we have a motion?
Oh, I'm sorry. Vince told me to hurry up.
Okay. Ms. Heinrich. Okay. This is the development catty corner from where we are now. The new building there finished. The last item to complete was to stripe the crosswalks. Our office inspected the site and found the improvements to have been constructed in accordance with the plans. We recommend the release of $18,183.32, and that will leave zero dollars left in the escrow.
Great, thank you. Any board comment? Any public comment? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Do I have a motion to authorize the escrow release number one for River Place 901 Washington Street in the amount of $286,670.78?
So moved. Second.
Ms. Heinrich.
This is the townhome development down along the Washington Street and Scoopel River. They have recently started the work and really been focused on the site remediation and earth moving and erosion control. We inspected the requested items and found them to have been constructed in accordance with the plans and recommend the release of $286,670.78, and that will leave in the
All right. Any board comment? Any public comment?
Sedel Zo of Harts Ridge Road. I have some questions about the remediation because I know, I read the reports regarding the nature and extent of the contamination, toxic chemicals in the soil. And I'm just wondering if you could briefly update everyone on the extent of the remediation? Have there been any surprises? And who's monitoring the disposition of the toxic soil?
Should I take that? So the DEP manages the remediation through their Act Two program. So there's reporting that they do with the DEP. The remediation for, well, the remediation is a cap. So they're not.
They're not removing.
Removing.
They're containing.
Containing it, and the cap is meant to separate the impacted soils from the public and from water and.
Okay.
Exposure.
But my understanding was that they were actually planning to remove the raised concrete area.
Yes.
And then recap it. So in removing that concrete, is anyone monitoring the extent to which volatile chemicals might be escaping into the air?
That's under DEP's jurisdiction.
Okay. And our release of escrow is not linked to any of this?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Any other public comment? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve expenditures totaling $1,302,186.53 and payroll totaling $703,853.79, and pension paid costs totaling $4,476.80 for December 2022?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Do I have a motion to approve expenditures totaling $1,121,260.24 and payroll totaling $701,875.32, and pension paid costs totaling $4,387.47 for January 2023?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Do I have a motion to accept the resignation of John Pettisino from the Media Communication Advisory Board and thank him for his years of service, for volunteer service to White Marsh Township?
So moved. Second.
Thank you, John, for your service. I know he's not here tonight, moved out of the township. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, we'll move into public comment. Is any public comment?
I'd like to address the board if I can.
Come on up.
My name's Ron Seon. I live at 4056 Hillside Road. My neighbor, Nick Vitron, 4058. Right, Nick?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I suffice the hand, I got some fire starters. The last time we were at your workshop meeting, you know, we addressed the board with our concerns about the proposed Miles Park batting cage facility that's going to be adjacent to our property. And we took your recommendation to meet with both Little League and the Park and Rec Board. And as we go through this process, our concerns and our questions change. You know, we have more, some get answered, some don't. But we did meet with two gentlemen from the Little League on site and went through their proposal, the plan, and there didn't seem a whole lot of leeway on compromising. I mean, our position is still not to have a roofed facility. You don't need six, maybe, you know, there's two there now, batting cages, you know, you could put three, and maybe we would even go to four, but no roof, no lights. And that just seemed to be where we left it. But in that meeting, we were talking about that we met with the supervisors at the workshop, and unless, I read them the wrong way, when we said that we talked to the supervisors and we were concerned about funding and hours of use. Nick, you correct me if I'm wrong.
Yes, sir.
And if I'm wrong, I will be the first to admit it, because I don't want to put any misinformation out. It's no good for you, for us, for the Little League, and I would have liked to address it this evening. But when we were talking about the supervisors, they said that when we asked about hours of operation and why does it need to be used 13 hours a day, seven days a week, their comeback was, you, the Board of Supervisors, were pushing for that. If that's the case.
And rental.
And rental and stuff like that. And I found it hard to believe, but that's what they said. So in my questions that I have for you tonight, that's probably paramount. I'm not looking for answers to every question, but I would like to get them eventually. But the question I'd like to have addressed tonight is that. It is, will the Board of Supervisors' proposed facility be used for, because to have it, to have it available for 13 hours a day, seven days a week, something doesn't click, it's just not right. But to have it used that long for seven months out of the year, or six and a half months out of the year, I can only imagine that this is going to be something like a victory field, an agreement. They're going to, it appears they're looking for donations. And what I see when they're looking for donations, I look at corporate sponsors, I look at regional or national organizations, athletic corporate organizations contributing money that will, obviously, they're going to want to have time there. So when you, when you read, and I didn't really get a chance to read it until today because I wanted it for this presentation, when you read their initial petition letter, I was so involved in looking at the plans that I really didn't cut through the plan, the letter. The letter is very self-explanatory. They are looking to use this for more than Little League. They want it open to the public. What the public is, I don't know, but it's in the letter, okay? And that, that concerns me. There's two batting cages back there now. They have them divided into two, four. It's fine. It's a disgrace the way they are. They need to be upgraded. I'll be the first one to tell you. But to put six back there, I see this as being a regional or area facility that's going to be open to the public at any time. And in their letter, they also address the noise. They know it's going to be noisy, but we're going to, we're going to give you a break because at nine o'clock, we're going to shut it down. So for 13 hours, we're going to hear that. And I promised my wife that I wouldn't play the soundbite that I had played the last time, unless I'm one month a year, because they do happen.
We got you.
No, no takers? Okay. All right.
I'll run out of speakers.
No, I don't need it. I'll put it in the microphone. But in all seriousness, I mean, that's, it's very concerning to us. I mean, we were glad, fortunate to attend the Park and Rec Board meeting. Ms. Nestor was there, and I understand that it's an advisory board. But there were concerns from a couple of the members of the size of the facility. It's actually five and a half times, maybe six times, the size of this room, and probably another seven or eight feet taller that's going to be out there, that were, at least that's what they're proposing. I can't see it. I can't have it. But after reading that letter today, again, several times, they know, they know it's going to be a nuisance. And that leads into a whole different story because, you know, we talked about ordinances and stuff like that, and the only ordinance that the township has addressing noise is construction. And then when you talk about nuisance ordinances, it's going to fall on the chief, you know? It is men. And it's not right to put them in that situation, okay? I'm going to, I took a little video before I left the house and, out to the backyard, and it's nice. We see the lights across the street and similar lights in the park. It's not, but it's quiet. When this thing, if this thing should go to that size, we won't even be able to see 75% of the park and then still have the noise until nine o'clock. So we're going to attend the next Park and Rec Board meeting and address our concerns again. But when, I have a list of questions that we addressed the Park and Rec Board with, and some of the answers that we got, very, very evasive on a lot of this stuff. And they, we just, I think the letter that they sent out to the residents, the petition letter, I think it was misleading, okay? It was misleading at best. And you say, oh, we're going to upgrade our two cages back there, we're going to make it nice for the kids, and oh, by the way, we're going to make it available to public. That's not what that was all, this is all about, open it up to the public. It's the kids, it's the Little League. That's why they need this commercial-sized facility back there to accommodate other groups and other organizations. I mean, I can't think of anything else. I mean, if I'm wrong, please, please correct me, you know? But I don't see it that way. So we're really, this may sound hokey. I mean, I respect the Board of Supervisors as a governing body, but I also respect you as my neighbor. The five of you are my neighbors. You oversee what's going back there at the park, how it's maintained, and as a good neighbor, I think things have got to be talked out here, and we've got to, we've got to come to some kind of agreement. Because what's going on, it seems like the tail's wagging the dog. It seems like somebody else is making all, calling the shots. I would like to think, and I think, that the Board of Supervisors make the ultimate decision.
Yeah, I think what they're trying to do here, Ron, listen, I'm, I hear you. I'm looking at this thing, I'm, you know, not many people are going to be in support of this on, on your street, that's for sure.
Right.
But the way I'm reading this, and, you know, maybe you're right, they're being a little bit deceitful, but they're just trying to garner some support for it, you know what I mean, through this letter. I think they're trying to downplay. But the point of the matter is, I don't know where we're supposed to go tonight. We still, I'm still looking at it as with Laura going to Park and Rec.
So at the end of last, I mean, the meeting was just this week, Tuesday, the Park and Rec meeting. So at the end, the Park and Rec Board decided to not vote on this, to table this, right? And left both parties tasked to talk and compromise. So have you talked to them since the meeting?
Well, we haven't talked to them since the meeting.
Okay.
And one thing I want to bring up, was a nice gentleman there that I think he oversees the Women's Softball League. And what I did, and so did Nick, we walked through the park, and we picked out auxiliary sites to put additional, and it's marked in my cryptic yellow pencil, but there's a map there, and there's probably at least four, if not more, sites to put five to seven more cages out there dispersed throughout the park. But what I, what I found a little funny was the gentleman representing the Women's Softball League said, he made a proposal to the Park and Rec Board that they need a batting cage. And he picked out one of the spots that I picked out to put a cage. And within 10 minutes, it was approved. And I congratulate, it was a good thing, but I said, you took one of the spots I wanted the township to use. But in any event, there are, there are additional areas down there. Chair McCusker, I wanted to compromise, and I will go as far as, I'm telling the board a public record, I'll go to the, I'll go three or four lanes where they're at now. Not roofed, no lights. Because when that happens, once you put a roof over that and the lights, it's a whole different ballgame down there. It's, it's, it's just, it will open you folks up for things where we don't want to go, and myself not, not being able to use our backyard. I'm telling you, I mean, till nine o'clock at night, it's just not right.
So can, maybe Rick or Charlie, can someone explain to us the review and approval process that needs to be followed before a shovel ever gets put in the ground?
Sure. We reviewed it from a zoning standpoint, there was no.
There is no zoning that is required from it setback-wise. There is no setback-wise that has to be, you know, that they're far enough away from a setback. So really, from this standpoint, it's just a matter of, it's your property. Typically, when we have these kinds of requests, it goes to committee, in this case, Park and Recreation Board, where it is now, and they would make a recommendation one way or another, it would come to the board, and the board can then decide. It is still at the Park and Recreation Board. They are still, as Supervisor Nestor mentioned, they are, they have not made a recommendation, they tabled it, they gave instructions to the Little League, as well as the neighbors, to have more dialogue, and come back to them with a response.
Is it possible to get everybody at a Park and Rec meeting? Like, the president of the Little League, perhaps? I mean, people got to get in the same room, and...
They were.
They were there. We were all there.
The former president was there.
They were.
Nicholas Vitron, 4058 Hillside. What, it's hard to see by their prints, but that facility there that they want to put in place, it's 7,200 square feet. It is a small store that they want to place behind our backyard.
Can I, can I also wait, make one more comment to this?
Sure.
The, the Little League's never presented anything to this board.
Yeah.
So they, they are, you know, listening, obviously, intently to your concerns, but that's why it's at the Park and Recreation Board, because that's an opportunity for both boards to go through and review those issues. This board has not had a presentation by Little League, they haven't seen the information that you, that you have, or that the, the Park and Rec Board has. So it's, it's difficult for them to, they're not going to make a decision, but to fully understand the whole entire project. Obviously, they want to hear your concerns, that's why you're here, and that's important.
That's what I'm saying, if they're already going to Park and Rec with you, it sounds like this is in the beginnings of a stage where there's things to be worked out.
Not how they explained it the other night. The other night, they already said they had a cost estimate of about $400,000 to $450,000. That they were ready to put shovels in the ground by October if it was approved. So that gives you a little...
But it's not approved, it's not out of committee.
And that's, and that's understandable. The concern is, the concern is, you're saying that zoning has nothing to do with the park. They can do...
No, 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 no. That's not what I said. I said, this structure, the way that it was presented to us, does not have any zoning.
It means all the zoning.
I'm not saying zoning isn't required in the park.
And I understand that, but, again, I just, I look at it simplistic, but you're my neighbor, you know? Let's work this out.
And again, I don't want to see you guys leaving here like super disappointed in, in where we're going, but we have to follow a process, and the process is still in committee, and we get a recommendation. I mean, I understand, and everybody here understands where you're coming from, we want to help you. But that's where we're at.
And the comment you made earlier, the comment you made earlier about that we were pushing this, fact is, we haven't seen it.
Okay, well then, and that's fine.
And we don't dictate.
I won't say anything about what we, they heard, what they told us. I, I mean, if that's not true, then it's not true. But because misinformation serves no, no purpose at all when you go through these processes.
I just want to, you know, just to kind of wrap this up. That property is the property of White Marsh Township. This board is the stewards of what goes on in the property, so they have the final say.
Absolutely.
So I think, you know, going through this committee, and going through this process, it's a public process, those meetings are open to the public, it's important to us that we have a process for what happens in our parks. That is where it is right now. And then at a time where there is some recommendation, or action that is required of this board, it will come to this board, and there will be another public process in which it goes through.
And just to, just to recap again, the meeting on Tuesday, the Park and Rec meeting, ended with both parties tasked to have a conversation and compromise, and that's what I would suggest happens, is that you both are, are still working through that process.
Right.
Stay involved before the Park and Rec meeting.
Believe me, I will.
So for the next Park and Rec meeting, I would imagine that there would be ongoing conversations.
It's starting to consume me, okay? This, this...
I can't tell.
And, and then being, you know, of Mediterranean descent, that makes it that much worse.
Well, it's always...
I feel you.
Yeah.
This guy. It's, one other thing is that I'm going to try, I mean, I would love for you folks, but maybe not right now, but the Park and Rec Board, at least, I think one member came out and took a look at the site, but to do this whole process justice, to see a neighboring municipal facility, and there's only one that I know of right now, and another one that's going to go up, that's going to be in the, the approval process over in Springfield, to make a, a visit to the site, and make a visit to someone else's site, and look at the facility, ask questions with, with the other municipality, and see what they have. But eventually, I would, I would love to have you guys over and smoke a couple cigars and have a bourbon on the back patio, okay?
I'm right around the corner.
And I'm right behind them.
We live together.
That's, that's, that's our concern. I mean, we're, you know, we want to keep you abreast of what's happening. We're, we're going through the process, we took your advice, and it just seems like, you know, talking to them the other night, doesn't seem to be much compromising, and I never thought I would say, put four facilities, four cages back there. But I think if they did that, and the other auxiliary sites around the park, they could have more than six, six cages out there.
Let's, we're with you, we hear you. Let's just see how it plays out in the committee.
Okay. Thank you very much for giving us the opportunity.
Thanks, Ron, yeah, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Any board comment? I'd like to announce we had executive commission, executive commi, uh...
Session.
Session. Ron, you threw me off. Executive session tonight where we discussed real estate, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.